Celine City Council Work Meeting to order on Monday, September the 18th at 6:32 PM. Members present are myself, Mayor Morrow, council members Dillon, Gierbaum, McClellan, Mitchell, and Mayor Protam Tahar from City Staff, we have City Manager Campbell, Clerk Royal, Labor Attorney Gerard, as well as Parks and Rec Director Scruggs, who's in the audience. The rest of you who are present, if you'd be so kind to sign in in the back to my left, we would appreciate that. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments. As submitted?
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Dillon, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Mitchell. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. As have it, the motion carries unanimously. Public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question to City Council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments? There are no citizen comments, then we'll proceed to the discussion portion of our agenda. We have our Labor Council here, Mr. Steve Gerard, to discuss non-union employment agreements. I believe there were some supplemental materials distributed earlier this evening, an Excel spreadsheet that compares the City of Celine to five somewhat comparable municipalities, as well as a memo from Clark Hill, actually two memos from Clark Hill, both dated September the 15th. Mr. Campbell, do you have anything you'd like to add at this time?
Just real quick. Oh, thank you. So, on the survey that the mayor just mentioned, you may recall that was requested at the last work session that Mr. Gerard was here. So, we did that. We used the same communities, you may recall, from the survey we did in preparation for that, talking about severances and that type of thing. However, Mylan and Tecumseh did not get back in time, but we are still hoping to get that information. I will certainly be happy to update that to you all once we, but this is what we had as of this afternoon. And then also on the back of that is the current steps for the classification compensation plan for the non-union folks here in Celine. And so, and then also, Mr. Gerard was tasked with a couple items, so just unless there's questions of me, turn over to him, and then we can certainly respond to any questions.
All right, Steve, I'm going to turn the floor over to you. Obviously, we gave you some direction and some insight about a month and a half ago when we last met to discuss these matters. Again, I want you to take as much time as you want to consume, and then we'll work our way around the dais. I'll entertain any questions, concerns that council members have, and again, we'll hopefully be able to develop consensus by the end of tonight's work meeting.
Thank you very much. Okay, I took my direction from the last meeting and put together a couple of memorandums for you based on my understanding of what my direction was last meeting, and you can tell me whether I hit the mark on any of it or not. But there's two separate memos here. The first one I'll talk about is the one titled "Modification to City of Celine Personnel Policy Manual to Allow for Severance Pay for Non-Represented Staff." All right, it's a long heading for a relatively short memo for me. So, what we talked about last time, if you recall, is we had a sheet very much like this one, going through a number of different municipalities, and we talked about the current contracts that our staff have, and the six-month severance provision that is in those contracts. And we kind of went around the room and talked about what we would like to see as a replacement for that. And we had some various positions, but I think the majority position was that the council would like to see some sort of language built similar to what the City of Mylan had, that was rather than you're here for two days, you automatically get six months of severance if you're terminated, or if you're laid off, et cetera, or your position is eliminated, or if you've been here for 25 years, you get six months. To a more graduated scale based upon your length of service. And so, I took a look at what the City of Mylan had and came up with a provision that I thought was similar to what they had, but not quite as quick in how fast that you would earn the severance. So, what I put together, and it's on the second page of the memorandum, and just so you know, there was a change in the memo from what I had sent out previously to the chief, excuse me, to Todd. What I had sent over, I looked at a couple of the things dealing with what the City of Milan had versus, they used a 30-day severance and a 40-day severance after one year of service and two years of service. But one could question, what is a day of service? How do we pay for that? We tend to think of salary in terms of weeks. And so, I changed that to four weeks of salary, because we all understand what a week of salary is. And if you're, if it's a 30 days, is that 30 workdays, is that 30 paydays? What is that? So, four weeks and six weeks. That's the only change from one memo to the next. So, if you wondered, if you didn't identify that, sorry, but that is the one change. So, what this language does is go through and try to hit all the details one would need if you're going to replace a contract like we have now that has a severance provision in it with a personnel policy manual, because one of the things we're going to talk about when we go to the other memorandum is replacing the annual contracts with a change to the ordinance and some language regarding that. So, if you're not going to have it there, then you need to have it in the personnel policy manual. So, previously in 2015, we had proposed some language that took it down to two weeks of severance, and that was it. And as I said, you guys indicated last time, at least the majority of you, that you would like to see something more and something that was graduated. So, with that said, the language that I came up here is as follows. Employees who voluntarily terminate their employment with the city, or who are terminated by the city based upon documented lack of performance, or for violation of the city's rules of conduct, are not entitled to severance pay. All right? So, if you quit, you're not entitled to severance pay. If you're terminated for documented performance problems, or because you violate the city's rules, then you're not entitled to severance pay. But full-time, so this is only for full-time employee, non-represented employees, so non-represented means not union employees, will be provided a severance payment as set forth below in the event of a layoff or job elimination if the employee is ready, willing, and able to perform the duties of the position held. Non-represented, regular, part-time employees would be entitled to severance pay on a prorated basis, so prorated for part-time, in accordance with their hours in the event of a layoff or job elimination if the employee is ready, willing, and able to perform the duties of the position held. Severance pay is calculated based on an employee's base wages only and does not include overtime, bonuses, et cetera. Exception to this policy may be made if in writing and signed by the employee and the city manager, because we said, always, there can always be a negotiation potential for somebody leaving the city, and so the city manager might need that discretion to deviate from this. Eligible employees will receive severance under the following scale. After successful completion of the probationary period, but less than one year of service, four weeks of salary, which is the same as the City of Mylan. After one, but less than two years of service, six weeks of salary, which is also identical to Mylan. And then, after two years of service, the employee would be entitled to an additional two weeks of severance for every additional year worked, to a maximum of six months of severance. So, after two years, they've got six weeks of salaries for severance. After, every year after that, they would additional, so they go from six weeks to eight weeks to 10 weeks to 12 weeks, until they total up to, eventually they get to six months of salary. So, it's a, it's a little more graduated, but it takes some time to get there, but they would get there with more years of service. And then, additional language, and this was, this was put into the last, this is actually part of the union, or the contract that we put together. For purposes of eligibility under the Michigan Employment Security Act or other state or federal benefit laws, severance pay will be allocated to an identical time period immediately following the date of employment, termination, or separation. And the reason you put that is because, let's say we gave somebody six months of severance pay. If you didn't allocate that to the period directly after they terminated employment, then they could walk in the very next day and get another perhaps as high as 26 weeks of unemployment. So, with this, it's allocated to the period immediately after they leave employment, and it's only after that allocation period that they would then be eligible for unemployment, assuming they still haven't gotten a success or employment at that point. So, this would be meant to replace what we have now, which is the automatic six months, or what was proposed two years ago, which was only two weeks. This obviously is somewhere in the middle. It can be up to six months, but if somebody would have to earn it over a relatively long period of unemployment. Can we take each of these separately? So, everybody gets a chance to, because they're two totally different concepts. Right, and this one, I think, might be, we might be able to develop consensus a little bit quicker. Let me begin. I appreciate your work on this, Steve. I think this is a reasonable approach, and if brought before us as an action item, I would support this change. Mr. CEO, do you have comments or questions? Well, I'll begin if you have any questions for Mr. Gerard, and then if you do not have any questions, or you exhaust your questions, if you want to state your opinion on the proposed policy, that would be terrific.
I have no questions. It certainly hits the mark with what I thought was appropriate, and I would vote for it, just like the mayor voted for us right now.
Yeah, just one quick, this would modify current employees, or?
Yes.
Just to clarify that.
This would be, this would, is intended to replace what is currently in the employment agreements that we have with each of the individual employees.
And then going forward as well?
Going forward, this is, would replace that. This would be a part of the employment, or the employment policies of the city as opposed to inside of a contract.
Gotcha. And it looks good to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clough. Still.
Sorry. Probationary period, is that a defined term somewhere?
Yeah, it's in the handbook, and I was, I wish I would have looked it up to let you know. I'm not quite sure what the probationary period. Do you know what the probationary period is?
That's okay, as long as it's a defined term.
I think it's six months.
It's six months?
I think it's six months.
Okay. So, as long as you've worked six months, you can get four weeks. That seems.
After six.
After six months, you get four weeks of severance.
That's if, but imagine how, that does seem like a lot. You're talking to me, that sounds like a lot. But on the other hand, this would only happen then if after, they've successfully completed their probationary period, they've maybe quit a job somewhere else to work for us, and then all of a sudden, we say, you know, we're laying you off, because typically it would be because of financial problems, or we're eliminating your position. Maybe something has happened, and now we're eliminating their position. So, they came here expecting to have a job, they've done well because they've completed their probationary period successfully, and now all of a sudden, they don't have a job.
Right.
So, to me, while I certainly am not a fan of lengthy severance periods, in my, in my situ, looking at the Milan, which was the same thing, or Mylan, they probably don't pronounce it like they're.
Definitely.
Like the Italian.
It's not like the Italian.
No, 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 no. Okay, Mylan, all right. Then, then to me, it doesn't seem, when you think about it, that exorbitant.
I guess my other question is, Todd, do you have any idea of what it would cost? Like, if we were to have a major riff of what would happen? A reduction, of course. If we were to have one, like what it would cost the city to get rid of non-essential employees? Sorry. (laughing).
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it would, it would just depend on, from my perspective, well, I mean, there's so many scenarios, right? I mean, if you're, if you're talking about reducing, if it were from a budget perspective, you're looking at supportive folks rather than the department heads typically, because then typically you see the department heads, you know, wear more hats, if you will. So, I mean, I haven't, we could come up with some scenarios, but I don't have a, I don't have a, be a total, total guess.
Just asking. I know that we talked about this the last time, and this scenario is used so infrequently that it's just, you know, sort of a placeholder. I'm hoping that this isn't going to be used often. So, that was really all I had about it, so, that'll be fine. Thank you.
Are you supportive of the policy?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gierbaum.
Policies I've been, you know, involved with in terms of riff and reduction and force and so forth, and even as you're staying the layoff, have been more something like 30 and 90 days in terms of notification, so you had that kind of extension out, which then, of course, you have recall rates after, for up to a year period, or preferential treatment. I'm not in a problem with the two, two to four weeks of salary, because that's 30 days and the 90 days. I'm looking at more like six months would be something if you had 15 or 20 years of severance service, and not just over 10. It's kind of where I've seen it, for being, the cutoff is at 10, and it's still only 90 days notification, and then the idea is that if you're giving six months salary in that type of situation, you know, we're basically terminating them, and we don't have benefit of using them at that point in time. So, the way that we have this set up, it's kind of not beneficial for us in terms of how we would handle layoff. It's more of a drop dead date, here's your check, and we don't have a benefit of that position. So, we're losing out on that type of a cost. So, that's where my concern is, is on how we would, if we're trying to assess and trying to contain costs, the question here is, how do you better handle it when we do a layoff approach? And this would come up to be an issue during that period of time, so.
And another comment, just along those lines, when you're looking at the length of this, the six months, which I agree is a pretty significant severance, you know, if you're doing a layoff, it's typically a time where you're, you're doing it because of lack of funding, and now you're committing yourself with a layoff, preventing, you're laying somebody off, or maybe perhaps more than one person, and then you're also paying them the money to leave, which can exacerbate the problem. But that is, you know, that is a concern.
And from my perspective, where I was looking at a six-month severance was more in the fact of, as it had been in the past, that if council all of a sudden decided to end somebody's employment as a whim, that six months was something to allow for that inconvenience to that individual. The layoff issue is usually based upon direct association with the inability to fund the position or so forth. So, from my perspective, I'm looking at a 30-90 type approach, so I would not be in favor of this approach as it is currently.
Mr. Tahar?
In terms of exacerbating financial difficulties, the, what we currently have would exacerbate them even more, correct?
Well, yes, if you're talking about the individuals who this would apply to, yes, they're all getting six months automatically.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Just wanted to make sure I'm still on the page here.
Yes.
Okay. In that case, I'm okay with this, and I would be in favor of it.
Ms. Mitchell?
Thank you. Mr. Gerard, I really appreciate, I feel like we spoke, and you came back with, with our intention. I really like what's here. I just have a clarifying point. On page two, the third bullet point, would it be prudent to have that six months of severance spelled out in weeks due to the, some months being five weeks and some months being four? Is there a reason?
We could say 26 weeks might be, to be consistent.
Yes, so I would, it's just a question. I think it's, you know, housekeeping.
Excellent point, and I agree completely.
Okay, okay.
I think that's a good catch. I think that change can be made without objection.
Proud graduate of Celine area schools. That's what it is. So, thank you, I really appreciate it. I'll be supporting this.
You should make that one minor change, Steve.
Yes, I will.
Okay, I think you have consensus, and I think this is a positive step in the right direction. And I believe Mr. Campbell articulated this when we, when we last met. Needless to say, we don't want to be in a situation where we're having to lay people off on the front lines, because as he indicated, the work just gets added to somebody else's plate, or multiple people's plate, and oftentimes, the work isn't done as well as it could be. That's not to impugn or belittle our staff in any way, they do, they do an outstanding job. The other thing that I think is worth noting to put this into some context, and the city manager can correct me if I'm wrong, but laying individuals off and providing them severance, I believe has been provide, been provided, excuse me, just once since my tenure began, and that would have been when we were adopting and considering the fiscal year budget for 2009, 2010. Is that correct?
I believe it was one of the ten.
Was it? Okay. What was the other type? Out of curiosity? Refreshing memory?
My name's Carter.
Oh, okay. Okay. Point is, luckily, it's happened frequently.
It has happened.
But it has happened, so, okay?
Thank you.
Steve, thank you. You want to transition to your?
Let me just transition, jump right into the next one, if I may. This one may have more discussion, I'm not sure. Because there were some items that, as I was going through this, I realized, because you all asked me before I left, are you sure you understand what we want here? And I said, absolutely, I understand. And then I put it together, and there were a couple of times I said, hmm, I wonder what I should do with this. So, what I did here is, this is, this is, as you recall, the whole primary purpose of, of what we tried to do back in 2015 that we recommended that didn't go anywhere, was to try to replace these contracts, these individual yearly contracts that we do, and save contracts for really two positions, the city manager and the chief of police. And everybody else would be under the employment policies, and, but we would have, still have to have some guidance on who, who is approving people when they get hired, and who is approving people when they're terminated, who has to approve salaries, et cetera. And there's a number of items that go along with that. So, the proposal initially was to, and so as I looked at this, there were three, really three groups of thoughts that I heard around the table last time, and I tried to get those all down into these three bullet points, these three Roman numerals with either six, five or six bullet points underneath them. As to what it was that we really were looking at here, because I heard different things from different people, and, and they made sense to me, but it really is a matter of what, what it is that we're looking to do. So, what I did is, I took bullet point number one and viewed this as what had been proposed in 2015. Okay? So, in 2015, the proposal was made, combine the offices, all these offices, city administrator, city clerk, city treasurer, city assessor, city superintendent, DPW director, building official, Parks and Rec director, and pollution control superintendent into the office of city manager. And then the city manager would appoint all of these, all department heads, deputies, directors, and set their duties. All of those individuals would serve at the pleasure of the city manager, and the city manager would set the salaries for all the department heads, deputies, and directors, and the police chief would continue to be appointed annually by the city council, but would be under the supervision of and report to the city manager. And then in B, the city manager and police chief would continue to be employed pursuant to employment agreements, setting forth their terms and conditions of employment. So, that is, I believe, capsulates on a few bullet points what had been proposed in 2015, and at that point in time was not considered acceptable by the council, and it was deferred. So, what I heard was a couple of other options to change some things here, and item number two, I think, was one of those. Item two was, we would, we would still combine the offices into this, the office of city manager, so we would get rid of these annual contracts for all these positions. The city manager would appoint the deputies and directors and set their duties, but the city council would appoint all department heads, although the city manager would set their duties, but the city council would be responsible for appointing the department heads. After they were appointed, and this is where I was not 100% sure I heard this correctly, but I believe I did, all sets of individuals would then serve at the pleasure of the city manager, meaning the council would appoint them all, but the city manager could terminate them, would have to go back to the council for termination. The city manager would set the salaries for all department heads, deputies, and directors. That was another one where I wasn't 100% sure whether, what you were looking for, if you wanted to appoint the department heads, was also to set their salaries, or did you want that to be done by the city manager pursuant to our policies? And we're going to talk a little bit more about that in a little bit. And then again, the police chief would continue to be appointed annually by the city council, but would be under the supervision, report to the city manager. And then B would be identical, both the city manager and police chief would continue to be employed pursuant to employment agreements. So, you have in the first, the one extreme, as I look at it, is you have the city manager making appointment of the department heads. I think the department heads was where the issue was with you guys last time, at least some of you. So, you have either the city manager on one hand appointing the department heads, or you have the city council appointing the department heads. Those are what I viewed as the extreme. And then, I heard in the forest, as what sounded like a middle ground, and that middle ground is what I viewed as number three. And that middle ground, the only difference in between number three and number two is item, the, would be Arabic numeral three. Department head appointments would be submitted to the council and subject to rejection by a majority of the council, which is a little different than appointing. Appointing is you've got the appointment process, you appoint. That's, that's, that's slightly different than the city manager, basically, when he would hire a department head, and he would submit it to you as the council, and you would, you would have the opportunity, you wouldn't have to, but you would have the opportunity to reject that, that member. So, that department head. So, it's a little bit different, and it's not quite the same, the rejection, as the advice and consent of, which is also, I heard somebody, I'd written it down in one of my notes, advice and consent, which is what we do with senate appointees and some others, which is a little bit different, because there, somebody is put forward for appointment, and then the, and the senate, if it's in the senate, doesn't have to do anything. They could sit there forever if they wanted it to. There's no requirement to act on it. And that didn't seem to me to be quite the right approach here, because it seems to me if we're, need a department head, we need to get going. So, I looked at what actually James Madison had suggested, rather than advice and consent, which was to submit with the potential for rejection, which James Madison got rejected in that particular position. So, what would happen here is, the city manager would, anybody who we wanted to hire as a department head, would do the interviewing, would make the hire, and before that individual could be permanently hired, their name would go in front of you, and you would have the opportunity to reject that, that hiring. So, that was something I had heard. Whether that is more preferable than simply just appointing department heads, you can decide and discuss. So, those are the three options that I thought I heard. The issue that I heard last year was right in the middle, was, I think just had to do with the department heads. I think that's where the real issue was. Some of you did not want to give up that, and I think you put it quite that way. You weren't quite ready to give up control of hiring department heads. And others were, were quite happy to give that over to Todd to do. And then there's others that seem to have a little bit different ground, and maybe I've caught it, and maybe I haven't quite caught it. So, so let's discuss that. These are the three options that I have come up with, and see if I have a lot of discussion and questions. Very good. Well, let me begin, and then I'll transition to council member CEO, work my way around the table, and end with councilwoman Mitchell. Mr. Gerard, I don't have any questions. As you just alluded to, my preference is for option two, which would allow council the ability to hire and to fire department heads. I am not in favor, as Roman numeral two states, conducting an annual appointment of any officers, including the police chief. I know there's a little bit of nuance and complexity to this, and I think option two indicates that the police chief, that position would still be an annual appointment. I would favor a blanket approach as it relates to the appointment and hiring of department heads. Do it when the position is vacant, and not deal with an annual appointment of any of our non-union employees. Again, job description, salary, and then the appointment and hiring of assistants and deputies, I would leave to the, the city manager. I think that's pretty much it for me. Again, I would reiterate the point that I made when we last met, which is, it's true that council's responsibilities are limited to policy, but the hiring of department heads and the individuals we have in those positions is absolutely fundamental and critical to the direction and well-being of the city. And so, candidly, I want, I want to say in what individuals are hired, and I want an opportunity to review their credentials and to assess their strengths and weaknesses. I think that's in the best interest of our residents. So, I understand there might be some folks that disagree with me, and that's fine, but my preference is for option two, noting those small modifications that, that I just verbalize.
Again, just so I, I understand.
Please.
What you said. I understand that you believe that the, the council should do the hiring, make the
make the decision to fire as well, and set salaries.
No, no, not the salaries.
Okay, that's it, sorry. Hire and fire. Okay?
Okay. Mr. CEO, can I transition to you? And of course, if you have questions, please, you know, ask them, and then if you could articulate an opinion, that would be wonderful.
I agree with you in essence, however, I wonder about our expertise in terms of hiring some of these department heads. I really know very little about the desired qualities for a director of public works or a director of wastewater treatment. So I don't know how qualified I am to make that kind of a selection. I could see the city manager, even if we retained the authority to make those appointments, the city manager taking a pivotal role in that appointment and advising us on how we ought to think to vote for some of these folks. But you're right, I wouldn't want to relinquish total authority, I don't think.
If I may, Mr. CEO, here's how I would address that concern, and I think it's a legitimate one. And obviously, future mayors and future councils are free to change the approach and the way that we do business, specifically as it relates to the hiring and firing of key positions within city government. But I think the approach that we're currently utilizing to fill the soon-to-be vacant police chief's position is indicative of a best practice and a solid way to screen and vet candidates and then to make recommendations. I can certainly speak to what sort of attributes and qualities I'm looking for in anybody who's in a leadership position. You, as a retired law enforcement professional, and you did some pretty high-level things in law enforcement, can speak to what sort of skills and credentials and training a police chief ought to have. So to make a long story short, I think that approach of utilizing the city manager, members of council, and then outside individuals with specific expertise is probably the best approach. And I think generally results in good outcomes.
I guess with that clarification, I'd be happy with the approach enumerated under Roman numeral two. I just wouldn't want, I just, I would view council's role more as a, following the leadership of the city manager in his being able to more aptly probably select the appropriate person for a position in the operation of city government.
Right. Well, again, I would, I don't think this could be overstated. And again, this is not exclusive to Mr. Campbell's tenure at the city of Celine, but any time a vacancy was created because of a retirement or for whatever reason, and we were screening people for the DPW director, the Parks and Rec director, it would be laughable not to include the city manager in on that hiring process, being able to screen and vet candidates, because this is the individual who's going to be their direct supervisor. So I think that insight is absolutely critical. I'm sorry, Ms. McLone.
No, it's okay. I agree with Mr. CEO. I think I'm inclined to like the third option, because I feel like I don't need to micromanage what the process is as far as, you know, and I understand that we need to be involved in the hiring process, but I don't think we need to be going to every interview. You know, I mean, I feel like, give us some qualified candidates, and then we decide. So I'm not sure where that falls, if that falls under number two or number three, because I kind of feel like it's a little bit of both still at this point. So-
I didn't give you a two point two and a half.
I know, sorry. And I wasn't here at the last meeting, so I apologize. But, you know, I agree again with Mr. CEO in that, you know, I have to put some trust in the city manager and that he knows the best practices for what to do for hiring, you know, specific job, specific jobs, and bringing those to us to take a look. Not to say that we, that takes us out of the equation. I don't know if that's what the mayor, what you're wanting to be involved in that process. And I think as council, we should still have the option to be involved in that, but not necessarily have to if it's not necessary. So, I don't know if that makes any sense, but that's kind of where I am at the moment, so.
Thank you, Ms. McLone. Ms. Dillon?
I definitely think that I'm leaning towards number two. I think the council should have involvement. And the other issue that we keep sort of muddying the waters with is we keep referring to Mr. Campbell versus the city manager. He may not always be in that position, and the next person that is there may not have the same views as the council as far as certain things. So, I'm not sure that referring council input would be the best choice. That's why I think sticking with number two would be better. I did want clarification, though, from the mayor. When you, are you implying that we would hire consultants or to help in the hiring process?
I think that, you know, quite frankly, I think that depends. I think on a case-by-case basis, it should be debated and consensus should be developed. I certainly don't think that every time it's appropriate to engage an outside consultant, but I think there are many occasions where it is.
I agree with you. I just wanted clarification, if that's whether that was what we were going to sort of put into place, or if it would just be on a case-by-case basis. And I do like the idea of it being appointment and termination. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Girba? Mr. Hardy, you want to share the mic?
No, it's fine. Just for my clarification, you know, we keep, you're using the word appoint. How is it different than if we had recommend? What process we currently have, pretty much is city manager recommends someone, and then the council approves it or rejects it. So, is there a difference in the terminology as you?
No, I don't do that.
Okay, okay. Because from my perspective, I don't have a problem. I-
Well, the difference between that city manager appointing and you guys appointing are two totally-
That's what I meant, and that's why I'm trying to use that terminology, just from-
If the city manager appoints, he'll inform you what he did.
Right, got it.
I mean, that's essentially the difference.
Well, and that's when you look at number three. That's why I was using the word recommend instead of appoint, because then I don't have a problem so much as we get the opportunity to reject the individual. You put all the effort into doing all the work and reviewing it and so forth, and he comes to us and recommends it. I'm just trying to decide what the difference is between two and three, from your perspective.
Well, the difference to me is, in number two, the city manager has to make a recommendation to you, and then you guys have to vote up or down. It has to be, assume a majority vote. Whereas in number three, he would put the individual up, and if there was an objection by anybody, or objection by a majority of the board, then they could reject that, but it's not necessarily something where you could decide, "All right, he's put it up, I don't have a problem with that, I don't have a problem with it," and that's it, there's no vote. You would actually have to take a vote. And whereas number three, there, no vote necessarily has to take place. Only if somebody makes a motion to reject one of the candidates, would there actually be a vote.
Okay. So, and that's where I was trying to clarify, when you mentioned it, I thought number three was a situation where you would, or number two would be a situation where it could just hang there forever, and nothing would-
No, it would, no, I was trying to, I actually was differentiating that than, again, somebody you had used the advice and consent word before, which is, if you do follow that approach, which I didn't do, basically, we, the city manager would put forth a candidate, and at some point, you could sit on it for as long as you wanted, until somebody decided that they wanted to bring it up for a vote.
Yeah, and that's definitely not, the up and down vote, as you mentioned, would be the way. We can't let things set, they need to have a decision made.
No, I agree.
And that's what your recommendation, I'll go whatever, whichever one that was, if that was two, two is fine. And then the other-
Hire and fire.
Yeah. And the other clarification, I know these position titles are either part of charter, whatever, but some of them no longer properly reflect. And how do we, do we have to go through a charter amendment to fix the pollution control superintendent?
We probably need to talk to Mr. Smith about that.
All right.
About what needs to be revised by the charter, because I noticed that as well, that there are, we use somewhat different titles for some of these right now than are actually in the charter.
And it wasn't, and that, I know is a charter change, but that's just something that I think we've talked about.
This is going to take a charter change anyway, so.
Oh, it will.
Oh, ordinance change, excuse me, ordinance change.
Yeah, that was what I did, wasn't sure if some of those titles were-
No, you can change those by the ordinance, I think you probably can, but I'm going to let Scott-
Well, a charter change is going to require the vote of the populace.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, there's a extra hurdle there.
And that's why I was just wondering if any of these titles we have listed in here were more of an issue from-
You'll relay that concern or question to Mr. Smith for us?
I will, absolutely.
Excellent.
And then the other thing, again, is when it says the city manager would set the salaries, again, my concern is what happened in California. I would rather have the recommendation be made to council, and then that we approve that from that perspective. That's that check and balance that did not happen out there, and I think we need to have that in place.
Can I stick on that subject? I'm glad Mr. Girba brought that up, Mr. Gerard.
Yes.
Based on the current language in option two, about the city manager being able to set salaries, which of course, you know, in principle, I don't have an objection to. We still do have influence over that decision by the numbers we approve in our general operating budget.
Oh, absolutely. And we have a scale. Matter of fact, I believe that we have a copy of it right here, that for you to review. So, but, and Todd, you're going to need to either clarify this for me or tell me I'm wrong, but I assume that we have the ability, when we hire somebody into one of these positions, to determine where they start on the scale. Is that correct? We don't always start everybody at step one. That's a determination that has to be made. And right now, do you make that recommendation to council?
Correct.
Okay. Then I wouldn't suggest we change that process.
All right, very good. Mr. Hart?
Thank you. Mr. Girba raised a couple of the questions that I had, so I had thought I was in favor of number 2.5, but if I now, thanks to Mr. Girba's questions, understand part number two better. So my question had to do with, number three sounded like the city council had a full responsibility for all aspects of the process, of the appointment process. But if by this we understand, and it's clear that there is a process that happens, and the city manager recommends to city council, and there's an up and down vote, then I'm in favor of number two. And appointment and termination also.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. Please, Ms. Mitchell.
So, I want to make sure that I'm understanding-
Yep.
-and making a decision based on understanding.
Yes.
So with scenario one, the city manager has the most control.
Yes.
We don't have any say whatsoever.
Other than the fact that you appoint and hire the city manager.
Exactly, yeah. Scenario number two, the city manager has less control than scenario number three? Is that correct?
Less control than scenario three? Yes, that would be correct.
Okay, so it's laid out in degrees?
Yes.
I guess, so I like scenario two as described, where the manager recommends a candidate for the council to consider. It's not clear for me in this wording that that's what happens.
This wording is simply to set out ideas. I actually talked to Scott ahead of time about whether or not we should prepare actual ordinance amendments to put forth all the language, and he said, "No, let's not do that yet. Let's make sure we understand what the council wants before we put the language that you would review before you had to vote on anything."
Perfect.
And that process has yet to take place. This is simply as part of the work process to get consensus on the direction you want to go, so that we didn't have to pair three different ordinances-
Of course.
-depending on which direction we want. So, this is simply, if there's any unclearness in the language or ambiguity, it's simply my fault.
No, no, it's fine, I just, I want to make sure I'm, so I do like scenario two, if it's spelled out that the manager recommends candidates, and then it comes to the city council for an up or down vote. And I agree with the mayor, Mayor Protem, and some of my colleagues about the police chief.
Not being an annual appointment?
Exactly.
Okay. I'm glad that you brought that up. Can we stick on that for a moment? So, it appears, and Steve, you correct me if I'm wrong, if your notes differ from mine, but it seems like there's a strong consensus in favor of option two.
Oh, yes.
Which, option two, as it's presented-
I would call it a modified option two.
Modified option two.
2.5.
Yeah, 2.5, indicates that the police chief would be an annual appointment.
Right, I would change that.
Okay. Is anybody in favor of maintaining the police chief's position as an annual appointment? No, okay. Let's get the microphone back to Mr. Girba real quick. Ms. Mitchell, he has hand up first, and then I'll come back to you.
Just one real quick question. When you said vote up and down on hiring and termination, the city manager has to recommend a termination to us, and then we vote on it?
That is my understanding right now, yes.
Okay. I'm just trying to remember how we handled that last one, so, okay. It was trying to determine if you had to make an immediate termination, or have you have a council approve it?
Termination, you're talking about four or five years ago?
Just in general, in the future.
That was one that was not a option, so it didn't get followed in-
It's purview.
So that was, I mean, certainly I contacted each and every red council, and said, "What's happening?"
Yeah, I just want, trying to decide how that plays out, because that can become more political when you have that type of approach to terminations.
Certainly.
Is that it, Mr. Girba?
That's it.
Thank you. I'll jump to councilwoman Mitchell, then councilwoman Dillon, and I'll get you, Mr. Campbell.
So, then my last remaining question, I don't know that I was clear on how folks around this table felt about salary setting. And I heard one person say that they didn't want to set salaries, and then I think I heard someone say that they wanted to. So I guess that's the only other part. Do you have a clear consensus on that point, Your Honor?
I guess I do not. I'm glad that you brought that up. My preference is to empower the city manager to make a recommendation in terms of salary. Of course, we, as I indicated earlier, we influence the process by approving a general operating budget. And of course, any salary has to conform with what our financial abilities are. But I would welcome thoughts on that. Mr. CEO, how do you feel about?
I agree. I think the city manager ought to recommend, and, you know, we can, we certainly have within our purview to vote up or down, especially with the budget.
Particularly how this would work, the city manager would be negotiating with this candidate and come with a salary, because you want to get a particular candidate, maybe that candidate costs more than a different one, makes the recommendation to you, and it would be your decision to make, yeah.
Good with that?
Yes.
Good with that, Ms. Dillon?
Yes.
Okay.
Are we moving to-
Yeah, I just want to get consensus on this, and I'll jump right back to you. Good with that, Mr. Girba? Good with that? Okay, 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 very good. Sorry about that, Ms. Dillon.
No, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure, because now I'm confused as to what Mr. Girba was just talking about, termination. So, are there two different scenarios where the city manager can terminate somebody, or does he have to suggest, bring it to us to approve before a termination can happen?
Well, with the department heads, what we're talking about right now, just so you understand, is he would make a recommendation, and you would have to make that decision, correct, Todd? And that means that he'd make a recommendation, there would have to be a motion, there would have to be discussion in an open meeting, and then that would have to take place. I mean, I-
Versus what, option three does not have that?
No, option one does not have that. Option one, the city manager would make that decision.
I mean, I guess I would, I guess I would address this particular matter this way, that any time there's a recommendation to terminate somebody due to a performance, it, that's a less-than-ideal situation. But at the same time, you know, municipal units of government hold themselves to a different standard than private enterprise, and, you know, it's important to be transparent and let the folks that we represent know what's going on in our organization. So, that's my take on it. Yeah, I want to make sure she didn't have any additional questions.
So, that's not how it is right now, correct? Right now, you terminate, or you're still bringing it to us? Because we haven't terminated anybody, so.
No, you haven't.
You guys are good. Nobody's gotten terminated.
Right, so-
Right, so, so department heads.
Right.
Department, and the one particular department head that Mr. Girbaugh was alluding to before, I believe, anyway, four or five years ago, that, that position was not a, while it was department head, it was not a officer, and by the charter, it says officer. And so, that, that particular, that, that was the sole, the sole department head, sole department head that had, that the city major had the ability to hire or fire directly. So, and then the rest, non-department heads would be hired, fired by the city manager under any of these, under current policy as well.
Yeah, if I may, as it stands right now, and you correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, you correct me if I'm wrong, officers are, of course, enumerated in, in ordinance, so any time an officer, and officers include non-department heads, were to be terminated, currently that would have to come to city council.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So, the change that we are recommending would be, would reduce the number of people that, that we would redo for termination.
Well, no, the, the officer, it would continue to be outside, well, it's, I guess, technically speaking, right, because it'd just be department heads.
Right, it's just department.
Right, because there are, for instance, the building official is a officer by charter.
But not a department head.
But not a department.
That'd be quicker.
Well, the, the current ordinance says that, that, which is, I believe, is something that at least you all discussed about going away from, but currently, the ordinance says, for all deputies, the council, the, the department head and the city manager brings a recommendation to council. But I believe that, at least my understanding was that that was, council had said, yeah, we don't want anything to do with the deputies, just, just, just focus on the department.
Right. Deputies are accepted from that under all of these options that I had.
So, I guess what I'm just confused with is the timing of it. If you had a situation where you needed to terminate somebody, are you going to have to wait two weeks if we have to have a special, are we going to have a special meeting, is what we would do?
Eighteen hours.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, that's, that would have to be a critical, right?
Right. Okay. I just didn't know whether you could suspend somebody pending, or how that works.
You certainly can.
Oh, absolutely, I mean, we probably-
Certainly can.
Probably would do something of that nature.
But you wouldn't want somebody lingering-
Correct.
...in the process of terminating.
Yeah, eighteen hours.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification.
Just, just a couple items. One is, again, and Steve, feel free to jump in wherever, correct me or not, but when it's a personnel matter, there's some, some pretty specific laws that need to be followed.
There's a lot of them.
And so, that, that's, that is one of the concerns to, to be aware of, right? So, when it becomes a public matter-
That would be my job to make sure to, make sure that you're well aware of them at the time.
Right. So, hopefully, again, hopefully we never have to go down this road, but that's one of the reasons we're, we're talking about this. So, that's, that's something to, to be thinking of, that, that is critically important there, because nobody obviously wants to have, have a suit filed against the city for wrongful termination or, or whatever, or, or violating someone's employment rights. So, the other thing, just as, I would just want to give you, if I could, just a couple of quick examples of what we've done in the past, since my tenure here for hiring. So, when longtime DPW director, Mr. Danifel, retired, I actually brought a recommendation to council and said, this is who I'm recommending to hire, and, and then council approved that. When we went through the process to replace former longtime retired clerk Hill, we did a little bit modified, where we had, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, I think, Lynda, did you, you sat on that, we had a commit, we, I mean, we did a, we had a staff team, team of staff members, as well as one council member, and then we all, I also brought in someone I know that's a very good longtime clerk treasurer with the experience, right, to have someone with experience, practical experience on the panel, and then we conducted the interviews that way, and then brought a recommendation to council. And then, of course, at the most recent one, then, of course, when former chief Button retired, and, you know, we go into the same process, mirroring the same process we had right now, and brought the, we would have, well, we would have brought, we brought three finalists, but then one of the finalists withdrew at the last minute because he took another job, but, but any case, council had the final authority to, to hire, which they, they made their choice, and then they gave the city manager the authority to negotiate and come back with a recommendation for a contract. So, that's, that's what we've done thus far.
Steve, anything else you'd like to add this evening?
No, I think that's it for right now.
Okay. You will, you've got consensus on both?
I do.
You'll work with Scott to draft some ordinances, and then what I would like to do, Steve, just because council members have not seen draft ordinances, I'd like you to get them to the city manager, once they're completed, we'll probably add them as a discussion item for council to review one last time, and then they'll come back in a subsequent meeting for action and hopefully approval. Does that make sense?
Makes sense to me.
Excellent, okay.
Thank you very much.
Anything else, yeah? I don't know that it's necessary, if your schedule permits, it'd be great if you could be here, but if not, I, I feel pretty comfortable about the consensus and that you understand what we want, but if there are concerns, the city manager can certainly relay those to you, okay?
Very good, thank you.
Is there anything else to be brought up from the dais this evening? No, then the chairman entertained a motion to adjourn this work meeting at 7:28 PM.
So moved.
Moved by Tahrir, seconded by McClellan. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, this meeting is adjourned.